I'd like to call to order the legislative session of the Salisbury City Council for July 23rd, 2018. I want to thank everybody for attending and for your patience this evening. Couple announcements, during the meeting if there should arise an emergency, please exit this door here, make a right, go down the back stairs. If that's blocked, take a left, go down the other stairs, and please, if you need special assistance, let us know, and if there is an emergency, please do not use the elevator. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Thomas E. Tucker of St. Paul AME Zion Church for
Let us pray. Oh God, Creator and Sustainer of the universe, thank you for the opportunity to serve you in this capacity. Grant unto these leaders wisdom that you may be glorified, the city of Salisbury edified. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. We can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republiq for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Glanz, you have a couple presentations?
We do. It's a full house tonight, I think because of some of these nice things I have to present. But I'd like to ask Chief Toll to come up here and help me with this, because they both relate to firefighters or helping our fire department. Do you want to take us through?
Good evening. Great night, great opportunity. We get to recognize some efforts by both civilians and members of our department. So the first event I would like to talk about is a reported water rescue that our department experienced a few weeks ago. So on June 27th of 2018, the Salisbury Fire Department was alerted for a water rescue in the area of La Quinta Inn where they're building the new amphitheater. Two construction workers, Mr. Brian Anderson and Mr. Gary Hurwitz, was working at the amphitheater at this time, and they heard a yell for help and noticed the victim in the water. Acting quickly, both Brian and Gary ran to the newly installed life rings and were able to work together as a team, grab the life ring, throw it into the water to the victim that was in the river, and maintain his ability to stay above float until we got there. So without their quick actions from both Brian and Gary, we believe this outcome could have had a tragic ending. It is my recommendation that both Brian and Gary not only receive an award from the city, but also receive the Salisbury Fire Department's Life Saving Citizens Award.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the mayor, we are presenting certificates of recognition for your wonderful bravery.
Every good program starts with an idea. And firefighter Snyder had one of those great ideas, and it was our Junior Fire Academy. So after watching some videos and seeing what other communities do with the youth, she decided that, wow, I could put a program together just like this. So her effort put into this program to develop a program that brought in children from grades three to five and put them through a junior firefighter camp. So this program, the first of its kind for us, we had approximately 14 kids, right, 14? That, what's that? 16 kids, registered for the program, signed up, came through a whole week, and it was during the morning hours from eight until noon where they got to live the life of firefighters. So they engaged in activities from learning about fire behavior, they learned about rolling hose, and wearing our turnout gear, our SEBA, to dragging what we would call rescue mannequins, and spraying hoses, and it was a fun time by not only the campers, but members of our department that were a participant of this and were there to assist. So we would like to recognize Rachel for an outstanding program that she put together, and we look forward to the future of enhancing the program, adding additional weeks to build on age groups, and other events that we can do to bring the youth involved. She recently was awarded the Chief's Leadership Award at their last meeting, and now I would like the city.
On behalf of the mayor, a certificate of recognition for your ingenuity and dedication to the city. Congratulations.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I forgot it was just three of us.
Are we going to amend it by pulling that one item off?
That's the consent agenda. So at this time, I'll take a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I would move that we pull out Resolution Number 2853 and deal with that separately after.
The consent agenda? Well, we gotta, yeah, we gotta adopt the motion in the second to adopt the consent agenda, then we can make a motion to.
Okay.
Now you can.
I will move, oh, we'll figure it out. Second. I move that we pull out Resolution Number 2853 to be dealt with afterwards.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And then we vote on the consent agenda?
You gotta present it.
Anyway, it's fine. Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the June 18th work session minutes, June 25th regular meeting minutes, July 2nd work session minutes, and July 9th regular meeting minutes, and Resolution Number 2854, which is approving the appointment of Joseph Anderson to the Parks and Recreation Committee for term ending July 2021. And that's it.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the chair votes aye. Is Mr. Anderson here? If you could stand up for a second, let us recognize you. Mr. Anderson is going to be serving on our Parks and Rec Committee, which is one of the committees that I serve on, so look forward to seeing you at our city park tour that we do every year. All right, thank you. So entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2853.
Seconded. Should I amend it now? I would move to make several amendments.
Oh, does he need to, we need to read this one?
Yes. So, well, Julia does, actually. Normally, somebody from Edmond would read
Good evening. Resolution 2853, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Wycomico County Health Department for the purchase of accepting sub-granted funds in the amount of $50,000, whereas the Wycomico County Health Department, in conjunction with the City of Salisbury, applied for funds through the Maryland Community Health Resources Commission grant program, and whereas the CHRC was awarded, has awarded the county, Wycomico County, funds in the amount of $90,000, and whereas the Wycomico County Health Department is sub-granting $50,000 to the City of Salisbury, and whereas the sub-granted funds shall be used to operate the Salisbury-Wycomico First Care Team, SWIFT, whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a sub-grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas 7-29 of the City Charter forbids the mayor from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the City Council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland does hereby appropriate the necessary funds.
I will move to amend Resolution 2853, line 15. It says "into and," we should change the indefinite article to "a." Line 16, we can remove the coordinating conjunction "and." Line 17 through 19 can be struck from this resolution. Line 21, we will remove the phrase "appropriate the necessary funds and." And line 22, we will remove "and expend" the awarded funds accordingly. In total, it should read, "Whereas, Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter forbids the mayor from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the City Council, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland does hereby authorize Mayor Jacob R. Day to enter into a grant agreement with CFEES." Does that sound right?
Sounds, that sounds right.
Okay.
Give us a second.
The appropriations language is what's coming in.
All those in favor of the amendment on Resolution Number 2853, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2853 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2851.
Resolution Number 2851, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland pursuant to Salisbury Charter provisions 14-1, determining that repairs to the stormwater management system within the Aaron Moore subdivision confers special benefit upon that subdivision and its owners, and determining that a special assessment is appropriate under the circumstances. Whereas Salisbury Charter, Section 14-1 permits the levy and collection of special assessments from properties specially benefited by public improvement, and whereas the City Council has considered the recommendation of necessary stormwater management repairs within the Aaron Moore subdivision, and whereas the Aaron Moore Homeowners Association Incorporated has requested that Aaron Moore lot owners be assessed for the cost of the necessary stormwater management areas, area repairs, and has approved the needed work through the Department of Infrastructure and Development and the Department of Procurement. And whereas the City Council has determined that the Aaron Moore subdivision is a special assessment district, which will receive special benefit from the stormwater management system repair work, and whereas the City Council has set a public hearing date prior to completion of the special assessment procedure, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that stormwater management system repair work necessary to remedy the problems identified in a recent City of Salisbury inspection reported is determined to be a public improvement that confers special benefits upon the 152 owners in the Aaron Moore subdivisions in the amount expended up to $24,000, and the council has determined per lot assessment due shall be $158 collectible in one installment on the real property tax bill.
All those in favor of, or any questions or comments?
Mr. President, yes, I have one. The, it's my understanding that the, these items will not be sent out with the real property tax bill that went out, so the language should read, let's see, "collectible in one installment as a real property tax bill," or "by a real property tax bill," I think, in that case.
On line 34?
Yeah, so on line 34, "collectible in one installment by a real property tax bill." In other words, a new bill will be issued for the, since the earlier bill had already gone out, which wasn't anticipated at the time this was written.
Can I get somebody to make an amendment?
I'd like to make an amendment to correct line 34. And we're correcting "by a real property," and we're excluding "on the."
Correct.
Seconded.
All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any other comments? Call for the question. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2851, please signify by saying aye. And the chair votes aye. Just for, so that the public is aware, there will be a public hearing on this matter on August 13th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers.
Got one more.
Oh, I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2852.
Resolution 2852, a resolution of the City of Salisbury making a declaration of official intent regarding reimbursing from proceeds of a future borrowing project expenditure is made in connection with certain projects. Whereas, City of Salisbury Municipal Corporation of the State of Maryland is in the process of undertaking certain projects identified in Schedule A heretofore, and whereas the city anticipates borrowing money for costs of projects, such borrowing to be evidenced by one or more series of general obligation bonds or other evidences of indebtedness to the City of Salisbury, and whereas the city reasonably accepts to spend city funds on costs of the project prior to issuance of the bond or any interim finance incurred by the city in anticipation of the bonds, and to reimburse the city from proceeds of the bonds for all or a portion of such previously paid costs of the project, and/or to use bonds proceeds to refinance all or a portion of an interim borrowing incurred by the city that is applied to reimburse the city for prior project expenditures. And whereas, Section 1.150-2 of the U.S. Treasury Regulation provides that local governments funding original expenditures intended to be reimbursed from the proceeds of the obligations must be made a declaration of official intent in order to qualify such original expenditures for reimbursement from a reimbursement bond, all within the meaning of the reimbursement regulations. And whereas, the city is an issuer of the purposes of the reimbursement regulations, and wishes to adopt this resolution for the purposes of evidencing the clear and official intent of the city to reimburse from reimbursement bonds proceeding original expenditures made in connection with the
Questions or comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2852, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Have a motion to approve ordinance Number 2492 for second reading?
Okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize Bronte de Schiel, La Petite Scholars LLC to operate a daycare center at 224 Philip Morris Drive in a light business district and institutional district as required by Section 17.28.040B of the Salisbury Municipal Code. Whereas, the City of Salisbury has received a request in accordance with the provision of Section 17.12.040B of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code to operate a daycare center in an existing multipurpose center at 224 Philip Morris Drive in a light business and industrial district, and whereas the mayor and city council may grant an ordinance permit for certain uses as specifically listed in Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code, particularly Section 17.28.040B, and the city council Section 17.12.08OD. And whereas, the Salisbury Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 17th, 2018, reviewed all information and gave a favorable recommendation to the mayor and city council on the request to establish a daycare center with a capacity of children and infants as authorized by the State of Maryland Regulations, and whereas the city council has determined that based upon the review of all testimony and evidence presented, that the request should be granted pursuant to Section 17.28.040B of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the ordinance permit authorizing Bronte de Schiel, La Petite Scholars Academy LLC to operate a daycare center at 224 Philip Morris Drive is hereby granted, subject to the following conditions of approval and any imposed by the Salisbury Planning Commission on May 17th, 2018. The name of the ordinance permit shall be the name of Bronte de Schiel, La Petite Scholars LLC only, and shall not be transferred without approval of the city council. This ordinance permit specifically authorizes the applicant to operate a duly licensed daycare center for the number of children and infants authorized by the State of Maryland Regulations at 224 Philip Morris Drive, seven days a week for 365 days a year, as long as this ordinance permit is in effect. The authority granted by the city council in this ordinance permit shall permit only the premises known as 224 Philip Morris Drive, and shall not be relocated without compliance with the Salisbury Municipal Code and approval of the city council. This ordinance permit, under rules of operation and conditions, shall be for children and infants, subject to approval by the Office of Childcare Administration and Licensing and Regulation, Maryland Department of Human Resources. The daycare center shall comply with all applicable state and local codes pertaining to licensing, health, and safety, including building, fire, plumbing, and electrical codes, whether or not shown on the plans approved by the planning commissioner of the city council. Offense not to exceed four feet in height shall be provided around the play area in accordance with the code. The applicant shall be responsible for maintaining control of all users and visitors on site, including any buildings and adjoining parking and play areas. In the event that company personnel felt, feel that there is an imminent danger to any enrollee or employee beyond their control, the authorities are to be notified immediately. The mayor and city council hereby reserves the right to conduct periodic review of the operation of the daycare center. In order to assure compliance with these conditions, the city council shall be the sole determiner of compliance with these conditions, and further reserves the right to revoke this permit upon a finding of non-compliance. No condition shall be altered or changed by any person other than by ordinance approved by the mayor and the city council.
I would like to make said corrections. In 24, I'd like to make an amendment to amend it to the ordinance Number 2492. On line 62, the correction of imminent, as we strike the E and put in the I, and on line 63, inserting "the" before "authorities."
Oh, seconded.
All those in favor of the amendment on Ordinance Number 2492, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, we will have a public hearing on 20, on Ordinance Number 2492. Is there anybody in the audience that's here to give testimony to this public, in this public hearing? I need you to stand and have the city clerk swear you in.
Where's your right hand, please? You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth. Thank you.
If you are ready, just ask for you to give us your name and your address.
Did you, did you state you were opening the public hearing? Just go ahead and state you're opening it.
Oh, okay. Oh, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing.
Okay, good evening. I'm Dr. Bronte de Schiel, and I will be the owner and operator of the La Petite Scholars Learning Center. I don't know what else, what other questions? I'm here, I'm just getting back from overseas, so my mother actually has been sitting in for me, as well as Ms. Ruark from the Office of Childcare. So I currently live and own a home at 228 Canal Park Drive here in Salisbury.
It's, other people also have the opportunity to speak in a public hearing, and sometimes they can ask questions, but nobody else has stated that they wanted to be a part of it, so.
Okay, good. That's it. Okay, thank you.
So as long as there's nobody else here for the public hearing, I will at this time close the public hearing. At this time, I'll call for the vote on Ordinance Number 2492. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2495 for second reading.
Okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, amending, Maryland, amending Chapter 13 Public Services of the Salisbury Municipal Code by adding Chapter 13.32, illicit discharges to add provisions related to prohibited discharges and illicit connections into the municipal separate storm sewer system, and for enforcement to establish compliance with those regulations. When we were here last time, I went through the whereas clauses and read for the public a number of the items that were prohibited, but this is basically an ordinance that's been mandated, that we must, you know, include in order to go forward, so.
All right, all those in favor of Ordinance Number 2495, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2496 for the first reading.
Okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to establish the Aaron Moore subdivision as a special assessment district for the purpose of financing the cost of stormwater management system repairs by assessing each lot owner the sum of $158 collectible in one installment on the real property tax bill. Whereas, the city council, the City of Salisbury, passed this evening a resolution determining the Aaron Moore subdivision is special, is a special assessment district, which would receive special benefits from the repairs to its stormwater management area, and providing for the payment of $158 by each lot owner in one installment on the real property tax bill. And whereas, the city council held a public hearing, which will be held, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Kim, that's, so we don't have a date for that yet. And whereas, the city council desires to enact an ordinance to establish the special assessment district and to require the collection of special assessment from each lot owner, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland pursuant to Salisbury Charter Sections 14-1 at sea, that number one, a special to Salisbury Charter Sections 14-1 at sea, that, number one, a special assessment district is established on the south side of and binding upon Dykes Road as follows. All lots within the Aaron Moore subdivision are included. Paragraph two, the special assessment of expenditures up to $24,000 based on the actual final completed work shall be equally assessed on each of the 152 lots in the Aaron Moore subdivision. The special assessment shall be collectible from each lot owner in one installment of $158. And then, just as we amended the resolution earlier, I'm recommending that it be $158 as a real property tax bill, instead of the annual property tax bill, since that's already gone out. Paragraph three, a special assessment shall not be levied against properties owned by the Aaron Moore Home Owners Association, Inc. Four, the special assessment shall be levied and collected, have the same priority rights, and bear the same interest in penalties in every respect as city real property taxes. And paragraph five, the special assessment shall be collected solely for the purpose of paying for the cost up to $24,000 of the stormwater management system repairs needed throughout the subdivision. That's pretty much it.
Amendment.
So that would be line 31. Yes. And the word "on" would come out, and so it will read payable in one installment of $158 as a real property tax bill.
Make an amendment to that.
What line was that?
Line 31. And I'm recommending that we remove the word "on," the word "the," and the word "annual," and substitute in its place the words "as a real property tax bill."
You said "on" and "as real property tax bill."
As a real property.
As a real property.
Right. And eliminating the words "on," "the," and "annual."
Okay, and eliminating the words "on," "the," and "annual."
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment on ordinance number 2496, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any other questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2496 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. And once again, that public hearing will be on August the 13th. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2497 for the first reading.
Second.
Second.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the council of the City of Salisbury to authorize and empower the City of Salisbury for the public purpose of financing, reimbursing, or refinancing costs of a project that the city generally refers to as the sewer extension-Mount Herman Road, as provided herein, to issue and sell from time to time upon its full faith and credit one or more series of, one, a general obligation bonds, and, b, general obligation bond anticipation notes, each in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $120,000; and, two, general obligation refunding bonds, provided that the original aggregate principal amount of any series of refunding bonds shall not exceed 130% of the aggregate principal amount of the bonds refunded therefrom. Determining that any such series of bonds be sold to the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration by private sale without public bidding, authorizing the approval by resolution of one or more loan agreements with the administration and with respect to any such loan agreement, acknowledging the administration's rights thereunder, making a pledge of certain revenues receivable from the state of Maryland and acknowledging certain payment responsibilities of the city. Writing that the council by resolution shall determine or provide for certain details of any such series of general obligation bonds, bond anticipation notes, or refunding bonds. Each series, each a series of obligations or obligations, including with respect to any debt service reserve account required by the administration, pledging the city's full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power to payment of any such obligations and providing for the imposition of ad valorem taxes upon all real and personal property within the city, subject to assessment for unlimited municipal taxation, to pay any such obligations, identifying or providing for the determining of the sources from which debt service on any such series of obligations will be payable in the first instance, authorizing the council by resolution to provide for post-closing modifications affecting any series of bonds or refunding bonds issued to the administration, providing that any of the obligations may be consolidated with any other obligations authorized by the council and issued as a single series of obligations. Authorizing and directing officials and employees of the city to take any and all action necessary to complete and close the issuance, sale, and delivery of any such series of obligations and to consummate the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, providing that this title shall be deemed a statement of the substance of this ordinance for all purposes, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of and for any such series of obligations. This is basically the water quality bond.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 2497 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2498.
Second.
Okay, again, ordinance number 2498 is an ordinance to the council of the City of Salisbury to authorize and empower the City of Salisbury for the public purpose of financing, reimbursing, or refinancing costs of a project that the city generally refers to as the City Service Center Comprehensive Environmental Site Design, as provided herein, to issue and sell from time to time upon its full faith and credit one or more series of, one, a general obligation bonds, and, b, general obligation bond anticipation notes, each in a single aggregate principal sum not to exceed $500,000; and, general obligation refunding bonds, provided that the original aggregate principal amount of any series of refunding bonds shall not exceed 130% of the aggregate principal amount of the bonds refunded therefrom. Determining that any such series of bonds be sold to the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration by private sale without public bidding, authorizing the approval by resolution of one or more loan agreements with the administration and with respect to such loan agreements, acknowledging the administration's rights thereunder, making a pledge of certain revenues receivable from the state of Maryland and acknowledging certain payment responsibilities of the city, providing that the council by resolution shall determine or provide for certain details of any such series of general obligation bonds, bond anticipation notes, or refunding bonds, including with respect to any debt service reserve account required by the administration, pledging the city's full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power to payment of any such obligations and providing for the imposition of ad valorem taxes upon all real and personal property within the city, subject to the assessment for unlimited municipal taxation, to pay any such obligations, identifying or providing for determination of the sources from which debt service on such series of obligations will be payable in the first instance, authorizing the city by resolution to provide for post-closing modifications affecting any series of bonds or refunding bonds issued to the administration, providing that any of the obligations may be consolidated with any other obligations authorized by the council and issued as a single series of obligations. Authorizing and directing officials and employees of the city to take any and all action necessary to complete and close the issuance, sale, and delivery of any such series of obligations to consummate the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, providing that this title shall be deemed a statement of the substance of this ordinance for all purposes, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of and for any such series of obligations. So this would be the City Service Comprehensive Environmental Site Design, and if you need any more detail, I think you'll have to ask your department.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2498 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That concludes our official business. We do have a couple of things before I get to public comments. I want to recognize Delegate Carl Anderton. He is here, as always. Also, I want to thank, I believe it's Mr. Schiel. I want to thank you for opening a business in the City of Salisbury. We appreciate that. A very important business, so thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Gail Terrence for public comment.
My name is Gail Hall Terrence, and I reside at 315 Penn Street in Salisbury. I've been a local resident for 69 years and lived in the city limits for more than 50 of those years. I am here this evening to request that you revisit the proposed increase for vacant building registration to the landlords. The current fee of $25 adopted for the year 2017 to 2018 fiscal year is proposed to be increased to $200 in 2018 and 2019. The ability to manage landlord's housing does much for the city, including an economic stimulus for the city tax rolls, preserve housings from dilapidations, lessens the lien on inspection supervisors, landlords mandate that renters cut grass, saves the city from mandatory maintenance that would bring vacant properties into adherence to the city's own policies, keep the city from placing uncollectible liens on sitting properties for apparent violations, greatly reduces the city base need to build affordable housing units for residents, secure temporary housing for incoming and potential retirees and students, and those in transition. Without affordable landlording housing, where would the students of UMS, Warwick Tech, or ASU reside? While I'm not suggesting that all landlords will increase rents to offset the significant increase, I am suggesting that the increased taxes, maintenance costs, and fees of the money has to come from somewhere. As a homeowner, landlord, and a taxpayer, certainly I understand the value and appreciate decent affordable housing, not only to provide to tenants, but to live in and maintain a respectable landlord, but more importantly, as a neighbor. The seat you hold as a councilperson is a paid position through the city taxes for as long as you hold this position. My point is, if a position on the city council board becomes vacant, no fees are paid. So why would the landlords pay for a vacant building that brings no revenue? The other thought I have is, we are paying double. It's just labeled differently. Another way to look at the landlord's vacant registration is in two categories: commercial landlords and private landlords. For everyone, the $25 vacant fee is affordable. The commercial landlord is subject to have numerous vacancies, and the private landlord is subject to have much less. There have been no complaints, that is, with the $25 fee. With such a large increase, I wonder what would happen if the units became occupied during the year? Will the city make a refund for a partial year? I respectfully request that you revisit this significant increase to some form or sliding scale, typically where there's an increase in fees. The consumer can measure what was implemented to the increase. I'm sorry, the consumer can measure what was implemented to create it, unless I am unaware, I have no immediate knowledge of why the need for such an increase. Your time and attention, I respectfully appreciate. And may I add, I know that you have a very hard job, but I do commend you for taking on the challenge of operating the City of Salisbury. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Terrence. Will, if you want to address anything in here?
I'm happy to chat with you after the meeting. I think there's some confusion on what the code says, but I'd be happy to go through that with you after. A vacant home doesn't have to be registered until 180 consecutive days of being vacant. So I think we can get on the same page right after this meeting? But, and then, just to elaborate on that, for the public, the vacant building registration serves an important purpose. If we don't know it's vacant, you know, issues can arise with people or animals or things getting in. That fee was $25 for a very long time, and our thought process for proposing that increase was, it hadn't really kept up with reality and police calls, you know, checks, which we do. There's, you know, a lot of, a lot more that goes into it than just, you know, keeping a list. We check on it and make sure that things are, doors are secure, windows are secure, things like that, so.
And it also, especially after a certain period of time, sometimes, especially with foreclosed homes, become an issue because sometimes they'll sit for long periods of time, and you get people who, you get the squatters. So hopefully, the landlord has a home vacant up to six months, because that's...
Well, I can see this as a landlord. We try to keep a very close eye on all of our units. And maybe some of your commercial landlords don't do that, but if I, as a private landlord, has two or three units, and I'm doing a very good job of taking care of mine, it's going to be less out of my pocket. I don't mind paying the $25 a year. But whereas, to me, if I have to go from $25 to $200, math is not that great, but I believe it's like an 800% increase, regardless of whether the city has kept up with the times or not. You have to take in consideration everybody, and the little man cannot pay, or it would hurt the little man to pay that type of a fee. Now, sometimes, it's very hard to get, when you screen your people, it's very hard to get the type of people that you need in those units. We have a unit that we built on First Street, and this is the particular unit I'm talking about. We haven't been able to get people, and it's a brand-new house, but we're not going to let somebody come in there and tear it apart. And then, there's the amount of money you're asking for the rent. Most people can't afford it. So, and a lot of people that can't afford it don't want to move on First Street. So that's my suggestion that you revisit, and I know that there's times when, I've not seen times where people have gotten in if the house wasn't rented, but I have seen people get in there that moved in, had dogs and all that kind of stuff in their houses. So as far as the animal situation, you have people living there and having pit bulls and all kinds of things going on in their houses, and you never know it, because the tenant is there. But more so, if a tenant is not there, it's not likely to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate it.
Julia, can I ask a question about this? Especially what she just spoke on. Is the $200, is it just for vacant properties, or is it for vacant blight property?
So the code says, "The requirement of this section shall be applicable to each owner of a building that shall have been vacant for more than 180 consecutive days, except that a condemned building shall be registered within 30 days." So, you know, in this case, I don't know if her unit has been vacant for 180 days. If it has, then she would have to pay it, but if it's just between, you know, turning over or getting ready to be filled up, she did some work, she shouldn't, that $200, how I'm reading, it shouldn't be charged to her.
Because I'm thinking, this is just my spin on it, if the property is well capped and not blight, I don't see why there being excess, the $200, if the property is up capped.
Maybe this is a discussion we should, we could probably put in on a work session.
I mean, I could see if it was blight property, and if it was just left there and just totally nothing done to it, but if the yard's been manicured and the house is indecent... But if the yard's been manicured, and the house is in decency and order, and the outside looks good, then I don't see why, and I'm not saying it just because she's here, I'm saying that why would we want to charge the person $200? I can understand you wanting to charge somebody who doesn't keep the upkeep, and the grass has grown up, and the property is dilapidated. I can understand that. I could. But not for a person, because like, I can understand what she's saying. Sometimes you just don't want to rent your property to anybody. And I can understand her on that, you want decent people. Because when you spend that kind of money on renovating property, you just don't want anybody in your property tearing your stuff up, because it becomes expensive for the landlord or the owner of the property.
And may I add to what April is saying, and for everybody else to know. The house on 139 Second Street here in Salisbury was originally the worst house in Salisbury years back. We bought that house and totally renovated that house. We had a family in there, of five. They totally destroyed the house after all the money we went into. I mean, we took the house down to every wall out and everything. So basically, it's a brand-new house. And they were in there like, a little over a year. And we had to go back and spend $50,000 on repairs in that house. So after that, you know, we were very cautious as to who we rent to. And we finally got somebody who was in there for eight years and did an excellent job. And I have another lady in there now. But to me, it seemed like double standard, you know? If you're paying taxes, you're going to pay taxes on the unit, no matter how long it's there. I don't care if it's a good house, dilapidated, or whatever, you're going to pay taxes on it. And then you have to turn around and pay for it being vacant. Your seats on City Council, if they become vacant, you don't pay anybody. But you do get paid while you're there. So it shouldn't matter whether someone is in the house or out of the house.
We appreciate you bringing the issue to us, and I'll have Julia sit with you after the meeting.
I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, do you have anything to say? All right, appreciate it. At this time, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second it.
We're adjourned.